I would like to call the development meeting to order for September fourteenth with the Stanford pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All Congress members, please.
Mr. Clonely.
Present.
Mr. Tippie.
Here.
Mr. Troxell.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Getzler.
Present.
Attorney Oshden.
Present.
Chief Cruzan.
Here.
Chief Dally.
Here.
Yes.
Mr. Manden.
Here.
Mr. Hewitt.
Here.
Mr. Wolfman.
Here.
Private Deale. Janice Malanowski, present. Janice Malanowski, you're welcome.
Minutes of the August tenth, two thousand and sixteen public meeting, pleasure of the board. Motion, second. Motion, second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero. Are there any additional claims, Mr. Malanowski?
No additional claims at this time.
Thank you, pleasure of the board. So moved. Second. Motion, second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero. Correspondence or reports through staff?
No correspondence or reports.
Any board members?
None.
There is no old business or new business, so I will take any business from the floor regarding redevelopment. Any business from the floor regarding redevelopment. Any business from the floor regarding redevelopment. Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned, we'll move on to the board of the board's meeting. Good evening, I'd like to call a waterworks board meeting on Wednesday, today's September fourteenth. The roll call will be minus Mr. Conley and Mr. Troxell due to the fact that we only can have three members on the waterboard. First item on the agenda is the minutes of the August tenth public meeting.
Motion approved.
Second. Motion, second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Claims, any additional claims, Mr. Malanowski?
No additional claims at this time.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, second, on claims, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Correspondence, any correspondence regarding waterworks, Mr. Wolfman or Mr. Stewart?
No correspondence.
Okay, no reports.
The only one thing I would report on is, is we did meet last week with Ted Summerling, who he grew in regards to the tracker that we're working on, Comedian American. And that's progressing, but we actually reviewed all of our capital pieces of because of the cost of meters changing and the appliances that we put in water service. So we're evaluating all those and we're going to include them in this filing, but that probably won't be till, the filing might be in October or November, and it wouldn't take effect until next year sometime. But that was, if you remember, we had a tracker on Indian American that we had two years ago that we absorbed, and we had one earlier this year that we, that absorbed, and that will be passed through to the rate tiers. And the rest of the things are not, they're basically the caps and the other non-recurring charges.
Thank you, Mr. Wolfman. But now, there's no old business on the agenda, no new business. At this time, I'll open up to the business from the floor regarding waterworks. Any business from the floor regarding waterworks? No business from the floor, this meeting is adjourned, we'll move right into the utility board. I'd like to call the utility board meeting for Wednesday, September fourteenth, and we'll add Mr. Conley and Mr. Troxell back to the five-member roll call. First item on the agenda is the minutes from the August tenth meeting.
So moved.
Second. Motion, second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Any additional claims for utility board, Mr. Malanowski?
No, not at this time.
So moved. Second.
Motion, second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Correspondence, any correspondence, Mr. Wolfman, on utilities?
No correspondence.
Reports, staff, council members, no reports. No old business, no new business. Well, Wolfman, business from the floor regarding utilities. Any business from the floor regarding utilities? No business from the floor, this meeting is adjourned, we'll move right into the town council.
Call the chair of the town council meeting to order for Wednesday, September fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen, at seven twenty-three p.m. Let the right to speak, let the roll call for utility board is the same, the town council meeting. We have, next item is minutes from the August tenth, two thousand and sixteen, August twenty-fourth, two thousand and sixteen public meeting. Pleasure of the council members.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing seen none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Any usual claims, Mr. Malanowski?
Mr. President, no additional claims at this time.
Pleasure on claims.
Motion to approve, claim, second.
Any discussion? Hearing seen none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Any correspondence, Mr. Wolfman?
No correspondence.
Report from staff, Chief Hood?
I want to report, I'd like to report to the council that we were successful in our applications to the Indian Department of Transportation for the community crossings dollars. We submitted three projects, harvested from every intersection improvement, Joliet Street from Junction Avenue to Austin Avenue, rehabilitation, patching, and some sidewalk and curb work, and Kennedy Avenue, patching and rehabilitation, over way from Junction Avenue all the way to Main Street. We were approved for four hundred and twenty-six thousand, five hundred dollars.
Very good. Anything?
No.
Chief Cruzan?
Just two things, Mr. Chair, and first of all, the work at Station Four on the renovation has begun. If you'd like to take a drive up there anyway, I encourage you to. They've got the footer of Or, or Doug, and it looks like they're getting ready to put in the footer foundation, so you'll be able to get a real, real understanding of what it's going to look like as far as the layout. The second thing I'd like to make sure I announce today that on Saturday, October first, is our annual fire prevention day. The venue will once again be the Tri-Town Safety Village on Eagle Ridge, and the hours for that are from eleven a.m. to two p.m.
Chief Dally?
No reports.
Council members, any reports, second.
Mr. Troxell, I'd like to take the opportunity this time to thank the Public Works Department, Parks, and Fire, and Police, and council members, and Jump Start, and everyone else that was involved in the one hundred fiftieth party at Reader Park. It was a tremendous job well done to everybody, and it meant that even though it wasn't too far, too, but people made the best of it, so I'd like to say thanks.
Thank you, your remarks made. Mr. Schmidt? Mr. Malanowski, anything on that?
No, not at this time.
Next item is public comments regarding agenda items. At this time, if you'd like to make a comment regarding our agenda item, the council is trying to come up and address those. Seeing none, move on. Next item is a public hearing. We have a public hearing, and as proof of publications, it opens the floor, Mr. Oshden, are proof of locations in order?
Yeah, Mr. President, public hearing may be done.
Good. It is open for floor, this is regarding ordinance number eighteen eighty-seven, ordinance annexing certain contiguous lands in Towne Sherwood, Lake Indiana, and on that way there too. Addition of Nipco, Russell Atkins, location seventy-third and Burr. Mr. Wolfman, anything you want to add on this?
This is the section of the bike trail that is adjacent to seventy-third, and goes north from seventy-third to about the Foxwood, beginning of Foxwood subdivision.
Anyone from the floor like to make a comment? I think they're seeing no one, both sections closed. Next, resolution, when do you take action on the ordinance?
First.
We're from Long Island.
The ordinance is.
Thank you. I was getting mixed up when you had a group of items. So ordinance eighteen eighty-seven, we're not considering that first meeting?
No. This is adopted. Always introduced at the last meeting. Resolution, resolution to approve fiscal plan. Consider that.
Any group direction? That being said, resolution two thousand and sixteen dash sixteen is really the resolution of the Sheriff of Town Council to approve a fiscal plan and policy for closed annexation of parcel of real property to Town Sherwood, Lake Indiana. Again, addition of Russell Atkins, location seventy-third and Burr. Anything you know about this, about regarding fiscal plan?
No, this is pretty void of play. There's really no touching depth of the binding this property.
Very good. I have another question. You said this includes the bike trail?
It does.
On the southwest corner of Joliet and Burr, or seventy-third and Burr?
Southwest, no. This would be northwest. This parcel, this northwest, belongs to Nipco. It started at seventy-third and went back to Foxwood Estates.
Yeah.
That section is the only section of the trail that was still being shown as an insurance issue. And therefore, because we take care of it, the, or Nipco agreed to.
So the piece of the trail between Burr and seventy-third?
Between, well, it is not between Burr and seventy-third, it's from seventy-third going north.
Okay.
So it's, it's, you know, the little triangle piece?
Yeah.
This is on the north side there.
Okay.
So it's right behind, well, it's between those.
Is it where the new bike trail connection comes in?
That ties into the corner.
And then the, the bike trail between seventy-third and Burr is still not insurable, or it is insurable?
That is insurable.
It is now.
Yep. That, the ownership of every piece of the trail all the way to the river this quarter is shown insurable up to US thirty, except for that little piece.
Okay, I guess that's what I was trying to get at.
Okay.
Right, it's not chopped up anymore, it's one, it's all insurable.
It's all insurable, continues.
Okay. Thanks. We thought that out when we were looking at that access bike trail.
When we were looking at that, that's what I was hoping.
Clean up, it's a clean up resolution, so. That being said, pleasure of council members.
Motion to approve our resolution point sixteen dash sixteen.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing seen none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries five zero.
Next, also, it's a public meeting here. We've got the next item. Mr. Oshden, are proof of locations, good for this one?
Do we have to adopt eighteen eighty-seven today, or no?
Thank you.
Motion to adopt ordinance number eighteen eighty-seven.
Second.
Any special on that? I said a special, I thought you said we didn't have to. But you said next month.
I'm sorry, here, open eighteen eighty-seven, that's next month, eighteen thirty.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Oh, we can't adopt eighteen eighty-seven tonight?
No.
Also, it's got to wait thirty days?
Yes.
All of sixty days.
Sure enough. We've got, there's, it's dashboard, that, we've, we've all.
So, order to take eighteen eighty-seven to not be acted upon tonight, so.
Yeah, that, the. I made a motion to approve.
Okay, very good. We're at item B, ordinance number eighteen eighty-eight. Can that be acted upon, please? Very good. It's an ordinance of the Town Sherwood, Lake Indiana, authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds, the purpose of providing funds to pay for certain capital projects and incidental expenses in connection with them, therewith, and on account of the issuance of bonds, appropriation, proceeds thereof, on that way there too. This is second reading. Mr. Wolfman, anything?
This is the, you know, remember, we bought the racetrack, we borrowed money, and from the Tip District, we have to fund that money by the end of the year, and this is about, you know, basically the end financing for that purchase.
From the Tip General. General.
Mr. President? Yes. This particular financing project is on the assing on time. Your actions. Very good. Pleasure of the council members on the ordinance for eighteen eighty-eight.
Motion to adopt ordinance number eighteen eighty-eight.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing seen none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries five zero.
Next item, item C is public hearing, proposed two thousand seventeen town budget, review and discuss. Mr. Malanowski, would you like to make a comment on this, or?
I would like to state, Mr. President, that this is the first of three hearings on the two thousand and seventeen Town Sherwood Post Budget. It is a public hearing, and I do have copies of it available by our reporter at the end of the table here, if the public would like to view. I also, if I may, would like to state that this is the first year we were not required to advertise the proposed budget. The gateway requirement was to submit the budget through their program at least ten days before the public hearing. The two thousand and seventeen Town Sherwood budget was submitted to gateway on Friday, September second, two thousand and sixteen. This meant the requirement of submission at least ten days before the public hearing, which is today, Wednesday, September fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen. Again, I have, I did state prior, there are copies of our Form Three, which was submitted to gateway for all the members, department heads, audience, who would like to look at it.
At this time, regarding the public hearing?
Right.
Is there any oral or written instructions regarding citizens opposing the budget? Seeing none, move forward. If you do want to make a comment, you, if you go into the minutes, we'll hear to make comments. At this time, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the court's documents pertaining to the two thousand and seventeen budget for primary action on Wednesday, October twelfth, two thousand and sixteen, at seven p.m. at this meeting.
If it's been a motion? Second, with a question? Second, with discussion. This is Malanowski.
Yes, Mr. Chief.
The column, the column that reads current tax levy, that is the twenty sixteen tax levy?
That is correct.
And the column, column three is the proposed tax levy for twenty seventeen?
Yes, that is correct.
So the, you're requesting, is that, what is that amount, so about a two or three percent increase?
Are we talking with which amount for the total?
Total.
It's about between five and six percent. We're looking at maybe between three and four, but I always put it in a little bit.
I guess I have.
Just in case.
Yeah, so we're, we are over a little bit more.
Yes.
Any additional discussion on that? Hearing seen none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, sign. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much.
Next item, no business, so we take it off the agenda. New business, first item, item A, is also taken off the agenda at this time. Item B is resolution two thousand and sixteen dash twenty-one, resolution chapter funds within category of appropriation. Mr. Malanowski, want to explain this?
Yes. Resolution number two thousand and sixteen dash twenty-one, we're doing transfers of appropriations within different categories of appropriations, and I have to do a little touch-up this time, or this month, seeing September. So we have, if I may name the departments, so transfers for the administration, fire, animal control, ambulance, parking rep, drainage, cable TV, public safety, MBH, and seated, which is the county economic development group on tax fund.
Very good. Pleasure of council members on the, resolution twelve sixteen dash twenty-one, resolution chapter ones.
So moved.
No motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing seen none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries five zero. Next item, item C is consider acceptance of the annual contract with the same John Tomcristi in the Town Sherwood for daily operation of the senior citizen drop, drop-in center, and maintenance operation of the senior citizen bus, one thousand five hundred dollars a year, two thousand and sixteen. And this is an, is both this and annual contract renewed?
This is an annual contribution.
Pleasure of council members on item C.
Mr. Chairman? I'll put the same price that we, that we paid. That's the same. Mr. Chairman, you've. Move it through, Mr. Chairman.
Is it a motion?
Second.
In a second, any discussion? Hearing seen none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries five zero.
Next item, item B is reclaim the week of September seventeenth to twenty-third, two thousand and sixteen, is Constitution Week in the Town Sherwood. Whereas September seventeenth, two thousand and sixteen marks two hundred and twenty-ninth anniversary of the signing of the Constitution of the United States of America under the Constitutional Convention, led by James Madison, George Washington, Benjamin Franklin, these brilliant men created a new form of government that became standard for self-government to the world. And whereas it is the privilege and duty of the American people to commemorate the anniversary of the draft of the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, and whereas public law ninety-one-five guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designated September seventeenth through twenty-third as Constitution Week. Therefore, I, Michael Troxell, President of the Town Council of Sherwood, Indiana, do my proclaim the week of September seventeenth through the twenty-third, two thousand and sixteen, the Constitution Week in the Town Sherwood, and to all citizens to reflect on the privilege of being American, of all rights and responsibilities, which the privilege evolves. Witness thereof, I have guaranteed, set my hand and caused a seal to Town Sherwood to be fixed, supporting this endeavor by the year of our Lord, two thousand and sixteen. It's a complaint.
Move it through, Mr. Chairman.
Motion for.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item, item E, is park board appointment, filled with presentation by Katie Johnlin. We don't know, we received a notification that Katie Johnlin has moved out of the Town Sherwood, and that left a position on the park board to be filled, which is a Democratic appointment. And from the end of the year, we had one application, the mental qualifications, which is Tom Malanowski. I'd like to get a motion from the board regarding.
Mr. Chairman, the other two are not in the town, not in the city. Would you place a name for Katie Johnlin for the front board?
Second. There's been a motion, second, this means to fill the remaining term of Katie Johnlin's term that was under. Any other discussion? Hearing seen none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries five zero.
Mr. Wolfman, can you make sure, Mr. Malanowski, is all the appropriate information regarding you?
Yes.
Next item, item F is consider acceptance of donations, total five thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars and sixty-eight cents. Mr. Malanowski, would you like to read these?
I really would, to the public, and I'll try to read quick as.
Go ahead, you have to take your time.
Donation acceptance as of today, September fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen. Ambulance equipment donations, Derek Christine Grant, one hundred and eighty dollars. Derek donations, Ryan Plank, one hundred and fifty dollars. Animal control donations, Caesar Bear, five dollars. Christopher Minze, twenty dollars. Total twenty-five. Canine program donation, Theodore Dorick, one hundred dollars. Explorer, debt program donation, Sherwood Park Department, five dollars. National night out donation. National night out event donations, eight hundred and eighty-six dollars, dollars and sixty-eight cents. Rob Gibson, applied controls and craft contracting, twenty-five dollars. Victoria Butler, TJ Maxx, twenty-five dollars. Ozenga Ready Mixed Concrete, two hundred and fifty dollars. Lake Ridge Republican Women's Club, two hundred dollars. Brunswick American Legion Post, four eighty-five, fifty dollars. Dairy Bell, one hundred dollars. Night Hop, Deep Burn, United LTD, three hundred and seventy-five dollars. Bunzo Enterprise LLC, one hundred dollars. Mason Corporation, three hundred and seventy-five dollars. The Hair Menders, one hundred dollars. Tri-Town Van Boosters, one hundred dollars. Epcart, Effect Pignants, two hundred dollars. Sillian Joes, twenty-five dollars. Wool Realty, one hundred dollars. Sherwood Civic Fund, two hundred dollars. You, or Yup, and Not Real Sure, Inc., thirty dollars. Center Point Rehab, one hundred and fifty dollars. Sherwood Central Lions Club, fifty dollars. Pantello and Crane Orthodontics, two hundred dollars. Knights of Columbus Council, one-two-one-seven-seven, one hundred dollars. Ryan Plank, one hundred and fifty dollars. Total donations for National Night Out was three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one dollars and sixty-eight cents. Treat Fund, Rome Three LLC, two hundred and fifty dollars. Diane Horr, two hundred and fifty dollars. Total treat fund, five hundred dollars. One hundred and fiftieth anniversary celebration, Republic Services, roll-off service for one hundred and fiftieth celebration event, three hundred and eight dollars. Karma Cigars, Epcart, seventy-five dollars. Total, three hundred and eighty-three dollars. The grand total is five thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Thank you for reading those. Pleasure of the council members on accepting these.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed.
Any business from the floor at this time? Yes. State your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, good evening, Janice Malco, one-one-nine-one-three, Eightieth Place in Dyer, Indiana. I come tonight as the representative for the Lake Central School Corporation. We are having an event, actually, I'm sure you've heard about it, because our police departments from the Tri-Town area have joined together with other agencies to support a program on October eleventh called Stairway to Heaven. And as you know, it doesn't matter where you live, be it Dyer, Rensselaer, Gary, East Chicago, it does not matter. Heroin is killing our children. What we are hoping to accomplish in this venue on October eleventh is, first of all, to fill the auditorium at Lake Central High School. Eleven hundred people, wouldn't that be awesome? And we're also hoping that we can all gather tools and ideas on how we can combat this enemy. I know, having been principal at Vivage School, I know at least ten children that I knew from Vivage that have died from a heroin overdose. So it gets real close to us, and these are not those dark, negative kids that you think, oh yeah, they're losers. No, these are good people. And it's called Stairway to Heroin because it starts many times with alcohol, moves into marijuana, and here's the real key point, is the prescription drugs. And then those children can't find that on the streets, and they need to heroin. And as you know, it's very cheap and very easy to obtain up here, and actually throughout the state, actually throughout the country. So we are hoping that you will join us that night. Everyone in the audience got one of these invitations, but I'm going to give you a personal invitation, because I know many of you care so much about our young adults and our children, and are willing to do whatever you can to help us with these efforts. So in advance, we thank you for your help with this event. May I?
Yes, come on out, you're welcome. Yes, ma'am, please.